And start the meeting, please rise. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska governing body, the city of Seward is abided by the Nebraska Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Meetings Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording processes is posted in the meeting room. A participant's sign in sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. Presenters shall approach the podium, state their name and address for the clerk's record, and our asked limit remarks to five minutes. Our remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Seward deserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda necessary and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Welcome.
Here.
Beck, here.
Here.
Miller, Singleton, Schmidt.
Here.
And.
So, the only item we have this evening is the work session for proposed 2016-2017 city budget. I think Bruce is gonna say a few words and then we have Terry here as well to present and Ryan to answer any questions. Go ahead Bruce.
Okay, well, we're doing this work session. We've been working pretty hard on the budget and been working, for some of you that don't know, we hired Terry Galloway. He is a CPA out of Grand Island. His firm does fifty-seven audits across the state for cities and I consider him somewhat of an expert on budgets. And so, we knew we had some issues with our budget that were pretty severe, so we got Terry on board. I started a conversation with him, Bonnie and I did about a month and a half ago, and then he's been helping us try to get this thing straightened out. He did come to the Finance Audit Committee about a month ago and give some preliminary findings to that group. A few of you are here that were on that committee. And so, what I'd like Terry to do is go ahead and stand up and talk about kind of the things that he found out about the budget, things we've been working on, where we're going, how our budget's looking now and what he thinks. So, there's Terry.
Okay. Hi there, everyone. I think what you have in front of you, about four sheets, maybe the same thing that's gonna be up here on the screen, just wanna point out a few things and show you where we started, I guess, and where we're at, end of budget process for sixteen seventeen and then what we think's gonna happen for the actual projected through the end of next month. So, first I wanna just walk you back through and you'll see on here it's two thousand ten, eleven. We started with about twelve million dollars in total cash here in the city and it's up to fifteen, 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 and all the way up to sixteen million. The thing that we need to do is break that out into the different funds and specifically when you're talking about the total cash, you know, you have utility funds, for example, electric, water, and wastewater in your case. And those monies are, let's say, at a separate fund, separate company, not always easily transferred up to general fund or to any other type of fund. And the reason they do that is under Nebraska's statute, the lit exceptions, you can't transfer more surplus fees than maybe what you've had as billed as a base under the rules. So, you can't just take money from ratepayers, for example, which is what's in electric, water, and sewer, and move it up to the general fund, which is taxpayer money. So, you've gotta look at it as two different organizations and two different groups of people paying into that. The other thing in your case that you're gonna run into is special revenue funds. Special revenue funds would be ones that have specific purposes. Debt service fund, for example, you hit the taxpayers maybe with a sales tax or a property tax that goes into the debt service that can only be used for debt service payments, principal and interest. Same way, you'll see here in the middle of the section, when you have a street fund, we receive state highway allocation monies plus the twenty-five percent math that were required from the local side of things, but that money has to go back into the street department either for infrastructure or for operations of the street. And then you have several other monies, whether it's LVA forty, under the new sales tax money we're removing some of that in there. But these are all what I'm gonna call special revenue or restricted funds. So, these have a specific purpose and cannot be used for any other purpose other than what they were meant to be from original. So, you have debt service and you have all these special revenues and then you have utility funds. So, even though we ended, for example, nine thirty, two thousand fifteen, with sixteen million dollars in the total cash here at the city, if you back out all of these that have restrictions and specific purposes, you're down to five hundred thousand dollars in the general fund, which is a low number. Now, I wanna go back to the very beginning, two thousand ten, eleven. We were sitting at about two point four million and then you'll see it went down, down, down to one point one, down to five hundred thousand dollars this last year. That's a pretty low number. We spent a lot of time across the state of Nebraska looking at what we call best practices. Best practice in the way of cash reserves, we look for operating reserves, we look for what may be restricted reserves for debt service, and then we also look at replacement of capital asset reserves. And I'll show you what those numbers come up with. Everybody can come up with their own in the city world, but we've been using something across the state of Nebraska that's worked pretty well, I think, for best practices. So, I'm not gonna talk about the far right three or two columns over here for right now. This is what is estimated through the end of next month and what's estimated through the end of next budget year. But this is the number I wanna focus and why I put a little check mark right here is the five hundred forty thousand. If you flip to page two.
Is it a tab at the bottom?
Yeah, you can see it, it's clear down there. There you go.
Makes me feel better. I'm gonna have to walk up here just so everybody can follow my numbers so you can see, okay? As he's making that bigger. This is the number you wanna focus on, right here in the first one. Well, that's even not a focus, I think. But cash reserves, basically nine thirty, two thousand fifteen, that's the same number, five hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. There we go, okay? Now, you gotta break that down further. If you have specific assignments where you set as a council that you have monies that are set aside for a specific purpose, not necessarily from a legislative standpoint or from a restricted cash section, but if you said, hey, I want to set aside money for fire and rescue, for example, which you have, you've gotta take that money out of here. Park and rec, police, and then the senior shuttle. So, you gotta take all that money out of the five hundred forty-two thousand. So, that becomes even a bigger problem. So, now you're down to the general fund having available on an ongoing basis going forward, negative thirty-four thousand dollars. And that's what we talked about at the last meeting when I was here. So, once you break down all the cash, yes, we have sixteen million dollars here in Seward, but how much do we have in the general fund? Negative thirty-four thousand, so we need to make it up. Now, here's projected through the end of next month, our revenues and all the way down through all the different funds and the expenses through all the different funds. And then we've made adjustments out here for any particular revenues in the current year. For example, those lot sales, I think in the cemetery comes out here. Fire and rescue, we are gonna spend some of that money down this year and that would be the final balance in that. Park and rec and then the police, I think we're gonna talk about some of these things in this proposed transfer area. Now, here's what we've had in the financial statements and the audits over the last few years was these match up exactly with what Brian has. So, these are the same numbers that we've been looking at. Couple of things that's been happening over the last few years, police, for example, if you go back about five, six years, actually prior to Ryan doing the audit, there was a maybe a doubling up of some cash that went into that police fund. We've been able to account for nineteen thousand five hundred of that is what actually is assigned or restricted or would have some sort of reserve on it. And I believe the thirty-one thousand could be used for another purpose. The same way down here, we have two funds down here that had some cash on your trial balance or on your books and those would also be available, I think, as we go forward for helping in our general fund itself. The big factor's gonna be right here in your debt service. We've been loading up the debt service fund the last few years with a lot of the sales tax money that we didn't need to roll into the debt service fund. And your sales tax money certainly can be used for property tax relief. And so, I believe that this is the number here. And the reason I came up with this number here, if you go out here to the right-hand side, you'll see something called my best practice. You know, we don't need that much sales tax money in the debt service fund and we do need to make sure that we shore up our general fund cash up here before the end of next month so it is not negative going forward. So, what I would propose is that we transfer this, 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 and this. They all have, should have little number ones, I hope, out here in the right inside, little red number ones, with the small print. Those would all go up here to the general fund. Could you slide up just a little bit for me? The other way, sorry. Up to me. Okay, we would transfer six hundred and fifty thousand dollars into the general fund administration to try to shore up some of that cash as we go forward. Now, we believe these are good projected revenues, projected expenses, and our ending assignments as we had talked about or what you had already set aside. So, I think those are good numbers.
If you remember, in this year's budget, when we did it last year, we didn't put a bunch of sales tax in the debt service because we felt like we were really heavily invested in the debt service already. So, that helped us last year. So, now we're basically doing kind of the same type of thing.
One other thing down here at the bottom, you'll see that's a little number two in the electric and water. We went back to two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen, again prior to when Ryan was, though we had some debt that was issued that was actually a combined bond ordinance and it was between electric and water. And when actually the proceeds came in, it was hit in here into the water fund for about one point nine million and it was actually electric cash. It was under some bonds there because what alerted it was we were going back through capital improvements and capital outlay going, okay, we didn't spend this money, so what happened to it? And that's why we went and took a look at that. So, I think there's a transfer that probably needs to happen between these two and it just goes between the two electric or two utility funds. So, it's not a big deal, but we probably need to get that fixed too on the cash balances. If you go back to the previous slide or tab, and I'll show you where that, why we was looking for this number here. Down here, if you see in the water fund, you'll see this big jump right here. Bruce kept wanting to know why this jumped two point two million dollars. Well, the bond proceeds from that combined revenue bond for that year was actually between electric and water and all the funds got deposited into the water fund right there. So, we're just trying to fix this because obviously we didn't go up two point two million dollars in the water fund in one year, so that's not gonna happen. So, that's the important part, I think, when you look at these. Yes, we have sixteen million dollars, but how is the money supposed to be spent and how is it allocated in here? And again, in our utility funds with twelve million dollars, that's a lot of cash in the utility funds. It's certainly not too much, but it is a lot of cash and we'll talk a little bit about best practices as we go forward. The good news for you and for all the ratepayers here in the community is you have some opportunities when you're going forward to either reduce some debt in the utility funds or to continue with future projects and probably use some cash and not have to bond it at that point in time. So, that's not a bad thing to have here. The only thing that's of concern is the fact that we just don't have much cash in the general fund or certainly much cash in the administration part of the general fund itself. Okay, now, back to the second tab. I'm gonna go over to slide up just a little bit here for me. Okay. If you go out here now, here's what we're projecting through the end of next month so you can see these numbers. So, we're gonna go from a negative number here by the time we get some transfers made and we're gonna maybe put some sales tax in there for this year instead of putting it down here into the debt service fund. We think we're gonna be able to get that cash number for administration up to about a million dollars. Million dollars still sounds like a lot, but it isn't. I'm gonna go over here to best practices. When we look at best practices, for example, we'll look at somewhere between four and six months worth of cash reserves on the operating side. And operating would be excluding capital outlay, capital improvements, and debt service. So, we just do a simple math calculation. It says we need four to six months worth of cash reserves. That's pretty normal out here in our fiscal policies in Nebraska. That number would be two million dollars in the general fund. So, by the time you add in these other cash reserves, and I understand, for example, in here, we're may, in the park and rec side of things, if we wanna set aside forty-five thousand and fifteen thousand in the next budget, that's also gonna take from cash available, so that would increase this or decrease this number or decrease where we have for a deficit in best practice. So, all these numbers are basically just lining up with whatever your assigned cash balances would be. But as you see, we're gonna go from a million here if we keep this sixty thousand, that's about the only one that's actually affecting us. We're gonna go down to seven hundred and seventy-one thousand, so we're going to continue going down in our cash reserves even after we fix it for one year. So, the bottom line, when you look at that, is your general fund's out of balance in current year. And I say out of balance, but everybody needs to decide as a policy what you consider a balanced budget. Now, if you look at the general fund, which is all these departments that are out here and you say, in our mind, a balanced budget is revenues equal to expenditures in the current period, you're out of balance because you're gonna spend more this next fiscal year than you're gonna take in. Now, the other thing that's important when we get into that is in this number out here in the administration side of things, I believe there's an additional increase for the electric franchise that's adding another four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars to this number right here. We've already got it plugged in there and you're still gonna be going backwards by two hundred and sixty thousand. So, we're spending way more in the general fund in expenditures than you're taking in revenues. So, obviously, everybody wants to, you know, decrease expenditures if we can control the budget, but we've gotta look for revenue sources. And that's when we went to electric and said, okay, maybe we can do another franchise fee, generate some revenue from that side of things.
John, if you click up on the top left normal view, will that make it a little bigger?
Where?
Up to the top, wait, go way to left.
Yeah, then you missed it.
No, not there. Sorry.
It's down at the bottom, no, bottom left.
All right, all right. Where'd that go?
Bottom, bottom left, way at the bottom. Right there, you can click on it and bring it up.
Restore.
I was saying, right here. Will that get rid of the page one and it'll be like all on one page?
Get it back to full size.
So, that's the challenge you're under right now. Even going into next year, now, obviously, some of it can probably be fixed here wherever that sixty thousand was or wherever we're putting some of that, but we've gotta look for some revenue sources and possible decreases in some expenditures if that's what you believe to be a balanced budget. Now, I usually lose a definition of balanced budget. If our cash reserves are where they need to be, then you can go with revenues equal to expenses. If your cash reserves are more than a best practice and you can actually spend a little more, but in your case, they're actually less. So, if anything, you need to be spending less than the revenues that are coming because we need to build some cash reserves or look for revenue opportunities. Now, if you slide down toward the bottom of that, we've got, these are just the other ones, the LVA forty, the TIF. These budget numbers for next year will match up exactly with the detail that you have so you can go through the detail part of those. Debt service, you'll see that we're only taking about five hundred and fifty thousand in there for sales tax. The other sales tax money is going into the street fund for all the motor vehicles, sales tax revenue side of things, and then the balance is going into the general fund with the exception of the reduction of a hundred and twenty-four thousand that we're going to lose in the way of sales tax revenue for next year.
That's one of the things I was gonna tell you is we get sales tax, but then there is a program out there at the State Institute for New Business and it's called the Nebraska Advantage Act. And what the state does is, they say, basically within ten years, you can come back and you can say, I want all of my sales tax back that I've paid for my new business. And they, you don't know when it's gonna happen. And so, then they come back to the cities then and they say, okay, you're gonna refund what you collected over those years back to that company too. So, the state takes it from us and this year we're gonna lose a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars from our sales tax. So, that's a big hit to us.
One more thing maybe to explain up here, you'll see this sales tax number is eight hundred and ninety thousand, this one's only six sixty-one, which is exactly what Bruce was just talking about. One of them is a hundred and twenty-four thousand. The other part of that is in the current year, we're trying to not put as much sales tax in the debt service fund and use up some of that cash to help improve our cash position in the general fund. And then next year, we're gonna have to fund it at that level as we go forward. Because you'll see over here on the right-hand side down toward the bottom, I plugged in about five hundred thousand dollars is probably what we need to leave in the debt service. Now, that may be a little bit heavy. That's about one year's worth of payments, probably could be maybe two fifty. You'll have to decide what you think a good number is in that world. We usually try to use somewhere between a half to one times whatever the debt service amount is. So, that one could be certainly on a short-term basis, decreased to probably two hundred and fifty thousand, but eventually you probably wanna get to this number. So, that could also help maybe balance the budget into the current year. The street fund is basically just six months worth of cash reserves for operating expenses only with no infrastructure or replacement of capital assets. And then if you go down to the utility funds, which is about seven point two million, that's where I was talking about, we should end up about thirteen million in the utility funds. And, you know, if you go through your operating cash reserves and your replacement of capital assets, which you've done a great job in replacing capital assets both in the general fund, the street fund, and all the utility funds, and then you have some restricted cash that has to be set aside in accordance with the bond ordinances and that. And that total calculation would come up to about seven point two million. So, we do have some opportunities as you go forward in the utility funds for projects of using possibly cash or paying down debt, but in either case, it does not help you in the way of your general fund cash reserves up above. I mean, that's all. You've gotta look at it almost as two different companies. Sometimes you'll have an opportunity to do that if you have unused budget authority on an annual basis, but you do not have unused budget authority on an annual basis. So, there's not a transfer of surplus fees you can do. You'll have to stop.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is that a question?
Okay.
On the water funds, last time you were here with us at the committee meeting, the water funds that you were listing out were in the, up from one point four million all the way up to four point five or so, and now I see that they're back down. Did you find out that that money wasn't in that fund or can you explain the difference?
That was that bond, that combined revenue bond that I was talking about back in two thousand twelve or thirteen, and that was between electric and water. And all the proceeds got deposited in water. And that's this little adjustment right here that I think we need to make to put it back into electric. Actually, let me show you on page one a better answer to that. And it'll kinda jump out at you. As you go back here, we're water here, one point four, three point six. That's the, what we talked about last time.
I would just like to add that on the city's bookkeeping side, we had it in the right place. It was just, I don't know, in preparing the financials, like that moved over to the other side.
I'm not sure, Terry, on the, on the math of what we're gonna lose next year, because when I come down here, are we still on that page yet? When you come down at line twenty-seven and you go across and you say sixteen seventeen revenues of five point five, five nine, and then our expenses are five, six, four, four, that's only about eighty-five thousand dollars difference.
That's true.
What?
Go up just a little bit. Two things that's gonna come into play right here, right here. Cemetery cash is going up, how much more in the way of lot sales?
Well, there's one.
Four left.
There's one left, and so I think we throw one sixty in there possibly.
Yeah, so you gotta take one sixty because that's gonna be restricted or assigned for the cemetery, plus if you do an additional sixty thousand to park and recs, so you gotta take that out of there. So, I understand what you're saying. So, yeah, if you just looked at this number here, down to this number here, you're only talking about eighty-six thousand dollars difference. Then you gotta add in sixty and you gotta add in your hundred and fifty, whatever I said.
Well, but we put the hundred and sixty in for the lots, but then we also backed it out as, as work done at the cemetery. We also already booked that one sixty as a cost.
Is that in one of these numbers here?
Mm-hmm.
It'd be in the cemetery expenses.
Yeah, it's right there.
It's in the three twenty-one? Okay.
Yeah, so I think we're double booking that or something.
And how much of that number right there is in here? I hear what you're saying, it does make sense that that needs to be adjusted by something.
Yeah, either we need to redo, you know, how we do it in the budget or what, I don't know. Thought we were closer than you think we are.
I know.
Well, you may here.
So, you gotta check our math.
Well, we've been working on this and we were still working on it at three o'clock when Terry said, I gotta go.
We put in one hundred and sixty thousand in as expenses. We put in one hundred and sixty thousand as revenue.
Okay. And the seventy-one, are we, did we spend that yet?
No.
Okay. So, this number should be seventy-one. Because we haven't spent it, correct? Okay. So, yes, that's.
If it's on the revenue side and the expense side, isn't already netted zero?
It is, but I took it and put it in here and took it out of here because I didn't know we were spending it in this current year. So, that number is, what number again, hundred and fifty thousand?
Hundred and sixty. So, it gets us up to nine thirty-one, five thirty-seven.
Closer, to get closer.
So, okay, let's say, let me just start with two sixty as my number and you just adjusted it by a hundred and sixty, correct? So, now it would be upside down, or we're gonna spend more by a hundred thousand than we take in. And that's presuming that we're going to set aside sixty thousand dollars for.
That's the ball field lights.
Ball field lights. Now, if you didn't do that, that would fix another. And then you'd be down to about forty. So, right now it'd be a hundred. We're upside down a hundred.
And the thing, you know, we, I guess, one of the things that we worked really hard on this year was, we passed a budget last year that was probably a little bit upside down and we worked really hard and made sure that everybody, if they needed something, they came. We talked about if we needed it or not. And then we really watched our expenses and, you know, we've gotten lucky because we've, well, not lucky for the chief, but we're still short one full-time officer because we lost the one to cancer. And then we budgeted last year for another full-time officer and so that's helped us this year as far as not spending as much, but, you know, we're about two hundred, if everything, if we finish out the. But, you know, we're about two hundred, if everything, if we finish out the next month the way we think, we're gonna be a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar positive. And so again, you know, we can kinda hold back on a few things.
So right now it would be about a hundred thousand, let's say, in the general fund.
Right, and we always feel like we budget kinda long on expenses and we, you know, we're pretty, pretty tight on revenues. We try to make the revenues as close as we can as possible. And then you always budget a little extra in expenses just because if you do have something happen, you don't wanna have to come back and amend the budget or something like that, so.
We can go to the next tab first. Let me just finish off the last two, just to give you a couple ideas and concepts here as we go forward.
Have to go down to the bottom.
Yeah, just the next tab, please.
I lost all my tabs.
Oh.
You're way down. He's gotta maximize the window. Down, 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 down. I should just go over and drive.
Okay, just to, just to run through this page, just to remind you, up here at the very top, we put in an estimate of some, if you wanna leave the levy, you'll see here, back here, we had a thirty-eight total levy. Where you can have the city and the airport all together. And then the last three years, it's been a thirty-five point three. And if you wanna continue with the same levy again this year, which I understand you may wanna do that, we'll have to see what the valuation is, which is up here, we put in an estimate. But if you keep that levy the same and your valuation comes in less than that number up here, then obviously you're gonna have to cut the budget a little more because we're not gonna give as much in the same way on property taxes. So you're either have to decide to ask for this amount, or if you wanna keep the levy at that, that's fine. Then we'll have to do something with the budget again, so. And we called it today and they don't have our certified valuation until Friday, so we don't know what that number is. And the last one?
We budgeted for a seventeen million dollar valuation increase. That's what we got last year, so we figured it might be about the same.
I'll give you my personal comments on that. You know, our, our valuations and our assessors, you know, the state does a lot of evaluations and then sent back to our county assessors that actually plugs them in and goes that way. But you remember when LB nine fifty-eight was proposed last year, proposing to freeze up our restricted funds calculation because the valuations were going up so much? Well, the ones I've already received this year, the valuations are going up very little. So I don't know if it's a coincidence or not, but I'm betting that you're gonna see very little in the way of valuation increases just because of some of the political arena that's happening out there. But we'll see what happens. The very first one I got, they had probably an eight percent increase in valuation last year, a city. And this year it was point four or five percent, so less than one percent. So it'll be interesting to see if we see the large increases in valuations. We may not. So it'd be, just my concept already. But anyway, here's a, here's something that you have to go through when I talk about restricted funds calculations, where you actually can't transfer from utility funds and transfer surplus fees. It's right here, more than you have in the past. For example, you get, if you do your supermajority vote, you get an extra two and a half percent on top of the one percent. The one percent on top of the two and a half percent, you would end up with about this much increase overall in your restricted funds authority. So really, right now, you have a restricted funds authority probably somewhere around two point six million. And when I talk about restricted funds authority, you know, Ryan's kind of always done all this for you and handled it very well. I just wanted to run through the definition. You're talking about personal property taxes, you're talking about sales tax, for example. You're talking about highway allocation, motor vehicles. So these are all your restricted funds. If you don't spend the prior year capital improvements, then it actually gets to be an add-back. So your base before lit exceptions down here is about four point three million. Now you've gotta take lit exceptions in order to get down here. Now, if they come back with a new bill this year, and I believe they will come back with something, they may give you a restricted funds base amount, which they haven't changed the base since nineteen ninety-eight. That would be the number right there and that'd be in a perfect world for you, everything's fixed, if they do that. If they don't, as Ryan and I were just talking about this, that we have to budget down here for some capital improvements coming out of these restricted funds in order to be able to meet our restricted funds authority base amount over here. So you have to basically plug in the seven hundred and fifty thousand, make sure that this number is over. If this was a larger amount, you could transfer from utility funds to your general fund. Then you could transfer, but you don't have that, unfortunately. This is, we have to use this number in order to even get you positive, in order to meet your restricted funds calculation. Now I believe we got our bonded indebtedness as a lit exception, interlocal agreements as a lit exception, they're all printed down here. And then we have to use these capital improvements. And the capital improvements can only be used as a lit exception on this math here if it comes from these funds here. And I believe where you probably got into a little bit of an issue was when you went back a few years ago and implemented the sales tax, it became a restricted fund. But at the time you did the vote, you didn't vote to increase your restricted funds authority at the same time. So if you think about the, the definition of the restricted funds, if you put in a sales tax and you say, I'm gonna use it for property tax relief, okay, that's fine. You plug it into this formula, if this number becomes bigger, that number has to become smaller because it won't fit into the base. Unless you increase your restricted funds authority vote at the same time. We get that across the state. I think I did three at this last May election. And Ryan and I were just talking about it. If, you know, you can always go through that vote and increase your restricted funds authority if we needed to. I would wait and see what the legislation's gonna bring this next year. If they give us a new base amount, they may fix it for you.
What's the success rate on that kind of a vote, Terry?
You know?
Do the people understand? Do the voters understand what we're trying to accomplish on something like that?
That's a very difficult thing because the ballot language says, are you going to, will you vote yes to increase your restricted funds authority? Okay, does anybody know what restricted funds authority is? I just spent five minutes explaining it to you, can anybody tell me? Nobody knows and our voters don't know. But the good news is, in all the places that I've put it in, and they've been smaller communities and sewers, we've had a hundred, hundred percent success rate in getting it done. But we, in the communities we thought were, might have been a concern, we did a special election. And of course, we got, or made sure the people that understood it got there to vote. Or we did it at a, a smaller election period where we didn't have a lot of voters. And remember, you only have to have ten percent and you have to have majority vote. So we've been successful, but it's a challenge. So if anything going forward, as Ryan's mentioned there, that I would maybe sit on that and see if we get a new bill that may help us out. And then if not, then we may tackle that down the road. Because this problem won't go away. If they don't fix our base, this won't go away until you take a vote. And Ryan's been basically handling it on an annual basis of getting that, so this number is positive and making it work for you, so. The other thing, now I went through all that, guess where I'm gonna go, page one again. Of course, I'll go back to page one. Tab one, sorry. That might be page two, is it? No, I think it's page one. Sorry, I changed up my page numbers. I gotta go to tab two, I think.
Tab two.
Yeah, sorry. The other thing that we can talk about a little bit down here, just a little further down, we get into the street fund, for example. In the street fund, you have an annual report that you present to the Department of Roads that says how much in the way of restricted cash balances you have in the street fund. Little further down, it's about right, there. You see seven hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. You have two things. You have, of course, your highway allocation money that comes in with a twenty-five percent match requirement. And then that's what gets reported to the Department of Roads. And that number is about two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. So that is specifically restricted for roads and you can't touch that part of it because it's your highway allocation money. The other part that you do have in here, that accounts for about seven hundred and forty-eight thousand in total, which is about four hundred and sixty thousand, it has been additional monies that you've transferred into your street department for streets and roads and things like that. And so if we have some projects as we go forward, I'd recommend keeping it in there. For example, that's why we budgeted seven hundred and fifty thousand for this year. If we don't, we might be able to use some of those cash reserves in the future and release them. Now, when I talk about some of these in specific, these assignments of cash reserves, these are all things that you as a council decide on, do we wanna set aside this money or not? If you decide not to set aside that money and use it for any particular purpose, then it becomes general fund cash. So it doesn't have to be. And that's what I'm talking about at the street fund here. We do have about four hundred and sixty thousand that we've transferred into the street fund that we don't necessarily have to use it. That's worth sitting right now, but there is no outside third-party restriction on that money. But we left it in there for right now as we go forward to see what we have for the street projects and infrastructure as we go into the next years. But as you can see, even on this year, if we get it down to our hundred thousand dollar difference in our budget, which Bruce and Bonnie's been working really hard to get it to that level for a long period of time, going forward, you can only imagine how much bigger that's going to get to be. So we've got some challenges ahead of us. We've gotta look for more revenue opportunities, just like what was plugged in here now for that five percent on the franchise occupation tax. We're gonna need more revenue sources as we go forward. That's a lot. Let's start the budget process.
The number looked better till you got involved.
So Terry, you say obviously revenue sources, other than taxing authorities, what do we have for revenue sources?
You're gonna have to look at fees, occupation taxes, franchise taxes, all of those. And, you know, obviously, you know, any place we cut in the way of the expenditures going forward.
You had mentioned the franchise tax on the utility funds, is that still part of that?
That's a five percent, now what percent did that get us to?
Ten.
It gets us to ten in electric. Normal is about up to twelve. And you'd be, pretty much all the companies will give you a twelve percent on occupation franchise fees across Nebraska. You can implement it also on your water. So you have some opportunity to get this in those two.
And that money can just go back up into the general fund?
Correct, and that is outside the restricted funds calculation. So where I was talking about on that calculation, transfer of surplus fees, that's basically saying, hey, I wanna transfer two hundred thousand dollars from the electric up to general. Well, you can't do that. But you can do it through a franchise fee and implement up to whatever that number is by, you know, ten or twelve percent. And that's outside the restricted funds and the LCF calculation.
We recommended only the electric to raise the occupation tax on them because when we look at how our electric system rates on, on sales and what the rates are compared to other communities, we're more in the middle. So we're not even, we're not recommending an increase in rates this year, and we'll talk about it at the meeting later. So we felt like it could handle it better. And water side, you know, obviously we're kind of the top end on what our costs are. So we didn't recommend doing anything there as far as raising our fees because I don't wanna raise rates there, so. Anyway, so that, in the same way as sewers, I just didn't feel like they were in the position to handle it. Increase like that because we do need to raise rates in the sewer department also. So that'll be the only one. So that's why we didn't ask about raising those fees to the other ones. And yeah, I, I put eleven percent in your packet about NPPD, but they did raise it a few years ago to twelve percent that they pay their retail towns. So like Carney gets twelve percent, York will get twelve percent. So we're not out of the, it's not like we're pricing ourselves way up.
And I talked about those cash reserves in those utility funds and you can even see it here because if we end at thirteen nine ninety-four and we're actually scheduled to take it down to thirteen four, so you're really giving your ratepayers a little bit of a break. Because we're gonna transfer more up into the general fund. But if this is a good number out here for best practice, that's been very good stewards of the ratepayers' money as well as the taxpayers' money. Because we are taking it down a little bit, you're gonna see from here down to here, it's about a half a million dollars which we're trying to put up into the general fund. If this is a good number that's out there, that's been very good in the way of the budget world, so.
I wouldn't say we're good stewards whenever we raise the rates every year and they wanna know why.
That's why I think as you go forward, that you need to make sure that this is the correct number and then talk about this continuing to probably flow up here to help out the taxpayers some.
You know, there's a lot of citizens out there, when they look at the cash flow that we got in reserve in the utilities, and then they're gonna ask why.
That's right. I think you've gotta be able to say, are, are we on schedule for some new major projects and we're going to use cash to do that? Or are we on schedule to maybe retire debt early? Now, of course, I hate retiring debt early when our interest rates are as low as they are. But if you certainly have future big projects, you certainly have some opportunities not to bond it and to pay for it out of cash.
Bruce, these numbers estimated for this year, that's in his spreadsheet, is that budget one or budget two?
For next year?
Yeah.
Budget two.
You might see a little, if you take this and compare it to what went out, to you, there are a few changes. We caught an error in electric. I don't know, it didn't calculate down, that added like a hundred and thirty thousand or something.
That was streets.
Oh, was that streets? Okay, I was like, streets. If we, if we go ahead and take care of this problem going forward for the next year, how bad could it get the next, say, five years?
Well, I think you're gonna have to go look at the other sources and look at where we're gonna be cutting back, so. We were going to do that, but this created a large enough difference, I decided not to go out any more years at this point. I thought I delivered enough news.
Well, it wasn't something that happened in the last year, you know. This is something that's been going on for several. And I guess I kinda feel like we kinda pulled ourselves up a little bit this year. And, and then for the next budget, at least we're close. And, you know, I think we can, we can get back down to the zero if we do a couple things, but...
So based on our budget right now, how much do you recommend we should be cutting back in everybody's budget?
Well, your general fund, you, you need to cut out a hundred thousand now. And that's assuming you're gonna leave the ball field set aside there. If you don't do that, then before... If you don't do that, then it'd be forty thousand. So that's in the, in there now. The utilities, I wouldn't, you know, I think you're probably pretty good there. And, you know, we are taking it down a half a million dollars, but I think you can give your ratepayers a break. So that's not an issue. The street fund, I think we have a good budget out there with even possibly some capital improvements thrown in there for about three-quarters of the money we may or may not do. And then pretty much all the other funds are in balance, so.
So you're not recommending any more reduction?
Not other than the general fund.
Well, like in the water fund, and I mean, we can get that in our budget, but, you know, we didn't show bonding that tank. It wasn't, you know, to me, that's repairs and maintenance. That needs to be paid for with cash out of your operating fund. It shouldn't be bonded because, you know, you paint your house and you do it. You take a thirty-year loan and painting your house, you just don't do it. So that's why maybe it's going to lose a little bit of money, but, you know. It's kind of like what we talked about last year. You don't bond for things that get used up in a few years, so.
And if we have good cash, I mean, we're talking about cash for operating, or cash for replacement of capital assets and cash for just restrictions on debt and stuff like that. So as you have and replace capital assets, that's a good thing to use some of the cash for. And if you go back to your percentages, we always look at a percent of net depreciated cost as a percent of the original cost of the capital assets. And anytime that you're below a fifty percent factor, it says you need to start saving some money for replacement. If you look at yours, you're over in both the general fund, street fund, and utilities. And that's why I say I think you've done a great job in replacing capital assets on a timely basis. Those percentages are above fifty, which isn't always the case in city your size.
Any other questions?
I'd like to do those transfers as cash transfers by the end of next month. So when Ryan does the audit, I'll let him know when they'll already be there, so.
But as far as the structure of the budget, this will be in much better shape than it's been previously because we're going to have a better accounting of where monies are supposed to be and what can be used for what. And it should be much more transparent and easy to understand moving forward. So we don't have a situation where it looks like we have all this cash because we're going, on paper, say we're going to bond all these items when in fact, we're not going to bond those items. And so then when those things are purchased, they have to be paid for. And we're not bonding them. And so it looks like on paper, we had all this extra cash. And the reality was, we didn't because those items have been properly classified as, as to be, to be not bonded. It's not capital improvement, then we would have had to have accounted for it in, in the general budget. Is that fair?
Yeah, that would be accurate. In the last two years, you know, our cash position, the general fund's gone down one point seven million.
But that's what we're trying to, to right the ship here with this, is that? We, and by doing it all this year, it's going to be painful to make this work. But we just feel it needs to be done because the way things are being done during those previous years just isn't a fair representation of what we're doing. And it's hard to, you know, to plan and know where our balance are. I mean, we've always been trying to work towards providing a better balance sheet for the council so members know where we're at, you know, this month or that month. Well, you can only do that if your data's good. And if the data you're using isn't good, then it doesn't mean anything. So that's what we're working towards. And this has been frustrating this year because of the things we're finding out needing to be fixed. Quite frankly, we shouldn't be having to do this if this was done right in the first place. So that's, that's why this is, but even with all these changes and all the, the proper classification that we're doing and, and getting the, the best practices reflected in the budget. I mean, we're not that far off this year. I mean, we really, I mean, I have a, what, seventeen, eighteen? We have sixteen million dollars. I mean, a hundred thousand dollars, I mean, that's a lot to me. But to the city of Seward, that's not going to be hard to address this year. I mean, the quick one would be the sixty thousand dollars for lights. But there are other ways to address that if you feel that lights are important. But that's going to be a policy decision for the council to decide because there's, you can get, like, six of what half dozen of them. You can get to a hundred grand a million different ways. That's just going to be the question for the council to decide, how do you want to get there? So I don't want people, it seems like everyone's doom and gloom right now. Like, the sun will, will sun come up tomorrow, Ryan? As far as you know?
And I, to reiterate what Bruce and Bonnie, I think they're conservative on expenses that, I mean, this, this is assuming we actually spend every dime that we budget for, which I don't think is necessarily true. I think we might come under a hundred grand just from how conservatively we budget for it.
Either, either accident, either, I don't say accidentally. Either, either we'll come under because we, if we recognize that there's an issue, we can decide not to purchase certain items later in, in the fiscal year. So there are ways to sort of manage it as you go. I think that's kind of what you're saying. And so, yeah, I know people, I mean.
And you guys have also reduced your overall debt by the same, near one point seven million over the last couple of years as well. So it's been.
And there should be some more refinancing, isn't there?
No, we're all done with that now. I mean, there could be one coming up, one or two, but we did that blanket. But you'll see the savings.
Yeah, so, so we, there have been a lot of good things that we are going to reflect in this budget moving forward. It's just was, it's like going to dentists. It wasn't necessarily a pleasant experience. There aren't dentists here, are there? But I should ask that first. You're a dentist?
No, I'm not a dentist either. I just, overall, is it, is it generally correct to say that if we make the transfer funds that he's recommending and do everything that he says, we'll be about a hundred thousand dollars short without no raising of the tax levy at all? So basically, that's where we are. I mean, if sixty minus or plus all lights or whatever, so we're looking at a worst-case scenario of finding a hundred thousand dollars overall.
And we will be able to provide you with a list of like, kind of where the, the last items we put in, the budget will probably be on the list of the first items that you could potentially take out to get there. Because we want to give you some, some flexibility on how you want to get there. But yes, we're, we're not that far off. The other question, and we didn't really talk about it, but we talked about it in, in the, in the committee meeting, is, you know, we are limited. If the council were to decide in the future to want to raise the levy, the city's levy, you are limited as to how much you can raise it at that given time, right? Is that fair?
Yeah, under that restricted funds calculation, you would be limited.
And so if you, you know, so, and, and we, so the point is, is that if, if the council may want to think about, if you are at that point, it's, it's hard for us to make up a deficit, a considerable deficit in one, one fiscal year through property taxes. And so if you wanted to look at down the road, you'd have to do it incrementally, probably to get to, you know, to a revenue point that would actually be considered or considerable enough to address the, an issue. Is that fair?
And one other thing, just as a reminder, I mean, your levy has been extremely low here. And extremely low to the point where you have a state revenue source called municipal equalization. The municipal equalization you normally get if your levy is above the statewide average. Statewide average is going down, actually. It's down to under thirty cents this year. But you've been probably above, I mean, below the statewide average, so that disqualified you. You have great valuation here in Seward, so that disqualified you. And you're short about three hundred and eighty-six people. I did the math on it. If you could annex some more people into the community, you might be able to get some state revenue at some point. But the bottom line of that is your levy is extremely low compared to the city your size.
And that was a reflection of that twenty-twelve, of the eight forty vote, which, which was part of the commitment to the voters was that a considerable amount that was going to go towards property tax relief. And so you'll notice the following fiscal year, once we started getting into that, we were able to then lower it. And I believe we actually lowered it again because, I believe, the airport authority had an increase not that long ago. And I think we lowered ours in order to keep the overall combined levy the same as well. So we were very careful with that. Of course, whenever I say that, the newspapers never hear. But we have been pretty good with our property tax levy for the most part.
Which is always. We passed that out for many years, trying to keep it the same.
Yeah, yeah, right close to the same. Yeah.
Which is reflected in bottom page three. That's what all those levies are definitely.
Terry, I mean, beyond the hundred thousand dollar deficit we're looking at from a budgetary standpoint, I mean, we're looking here, for me, I'm looking at the end game of where we're sitting. And this whole discussion's been around our general fund and the fact that, right now, we're actually upside down. On, on, on your spreadsheet you have here for us, the estimated balance of our general fund at the end of next fiscal year, is seven hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. That, that's a huge turnaround in one year. Granted, we're playing in numbers game and shifting dollars around, but it's a, it's a huge number shift, leading us in the right direction, even though we're spending more than we're bringing in. I, I know these, these two over three, I don't know, Josh has participated. I know these other two have done a ton of work. And we're smart bringing you into the game to help us out. Because this is a complaint I've had since day one on the council, is knowing exactly where we're at, seeing a cash flow. What do we do? The hundred thousand doesn't concern me. Honestly, it doesn't concern me. I think getting to the seven seventy-one, again, huge turnaround. We're moving in the right direction, even though we're spending more than we're bringing in. But we need something like this on a more regular basis, not a budget type. And whether that's monthly or quarterly, whatever it takes to get it done. Because we're sitting here as a council making decisions and not really knowing where we're at and what we're doing. And honestly, we're taking a best guess a lot of the times versus knowing exactly what it means here. So I, I don't know. I mean, I know we've had the accountant position out there forever. And I know last time when you were at our committee, you know, whoever can help put this stuff together, we need to see it.
Yeah, I agree with that because being part of even the fire department, even some of the other entities, and then all of a sudden, we're in the negative and we don't know why. And they're supposed to be positive. Well, it's because the other entities got ahead of you in the general fund and took the money out of there before the other person that was being conservative didn't get it. And I agree with.
We have the most in there right now.
I agree with what, what Chris is saying. You know, we shouldn't be, you know, being told we're in the negative and we, we think we should be in the positive. And I, if we're going to do this quarterly, we get a report out so we know where all the entities in the, the city are. I'd like to see that.
We're going to do that.
I mean, I don't like hearing negative, all of a sudden, we're, we're going to buy something. Well, you got a whole lot there, ain't no money, we're in the negative. I'd rather see it in black, but why can't see white?
One of the problems that we have is that our revenues are cyclical because your property tax comes in basically three times a year. So you kind of have to watch that. But we're building a spreadsheet right now that, we're going to start tracking these Morris funds. Basically, what we've done right now is it's all gone into one pot, and then it's paid out of one pot. And so we're going to start tracking these things as funds. And so you're going to be able to see each month how each fund's doing, basically. And I think the idea would be is we're going to take the, we're going to take the property tax and we're going to split that up amongst the departments that use property tax, sales tax, same way. So at the beginning of the year, this department's going to get three hundred thousand dollars in taxes. And then as they spend it and they bring in their own revenues, then you can kind of follow how that works.
Yes, credit, debit and credit.
And so that's what, that's what we're building right now. Bonnie and Julie have been working on that spreadsheet. So I think with, since Terry's helped us a lot on this kind of stuff, and, you know, he's, we, we feel now more comfortable with where we're at as far as building these things. And we're going to continue to try to find an accountant. But with Terry's help, with Ryan's help, you know, I think we can still get the information that we need to you, to where you're more comfortable, to where we're more comfortable. You know, like I said, since I've been here, I haven't been comfortable. And so, but I feel so much better right now because I do feel like we've got a budget now that's a true picture of the condition, our revenues, our expenses, our restricted fund numbers, where we're at cash-wise. I just, you know, it's been a long road, but I, I feel a lot better about it.
Yeah, a couple of things I need to throw you under to the bus here, Bonnie. But she actually did this spreadsheet, so she can do it for you. I just received it. But Ellen, just to make sure that we're clear, the hundred thousand is true. But we've also projected that the certified valuation will come in at four, four hundred and sixty million or more. So if it's less than that, that number may be larger.
And what's their drop dead date on that, I forget?
Friday.
Friday.
Friday is valuation.
Saturday? But if we, ten million dollars is forty thousand dollars, basically. Well, thirty-five thousand dollars. So even if it doesn't go up what we think, it's still not, it doesn't. It's not going to destroy us.
Right.
So when you think about it, if you think about point oh one, that's, that's basically what we dropped a couple of years ago. Point oh one's is, is forty-four thousand dollars. So that's what we've basically lost for the last few years, too. It's another way to kind of look at it, is we've lost that revenue that we would have had before.
So we're still in the same ballpark. We don't have lights.
We don't have lights.
Hey, Wrigley went a long time without lights. Any other questions? We do have, I mean, you have the budget in front of you. I mean, there were times in the past where you actually went page by page. I don't know if that's necessary. If you have any particular questions, obviously, you can bring it up now. We still have, you know, time for our next meeting. If you want to take it with you and go through it and just ask Bruce or Bonnie the questions later, you sure can. If we do get specific questions that we think other council members might also have, we'll share those answers with everybody, if that's helpful. Yeah, Bruce?
I asked James Kinsey to come, the fire chief, if you guys had any questions for the fire department. I know.
One thing I'll bring up for the fire department, there is some money that's been reserved. And it's something that we probably need to talk about that might be hitting us.
Okay, but not now?
Probably not a good time, but probably after the meeting adjournments.
That's fine.
So we might have to put it into the budget.
Okay, we can talk about that later. Is there anything else?
And then I also had Eric come, too, from the airport authority, if we had any questions about the airport authority, because their budget's in ours. Separate levy, but it's still a budget within the city.
Yeah, we're running up on deadlines to have those, those numbers finalized, especially with publication requirements, so it moves everything up closer than you might think. So we just want to make sure everyone's in the room in case there was a question. Chris?
I mean, most things I've taken up with you guys are ready through email. But when I was looking at, going through the numbers here, and I just want to make sure it's not a spreadsheet here that might change some dollars. So on the administrative side, I'm looking at salaries. And I see we dropped from a forty-two thousand dollar number to a seventeen thousand dollar number because we're allocating things differently. But things like, if we're allocating differently, the group insurance number didn't change. The retirement number actually went up by twenty percent. And if we're, if we're moving it. I just want to make sure we don't have it doubled up somewhere else.
No, and we fixed that, Chris, the five oh two, point oh one.
Yep.
It was missing a, the spreadsheet was built, you know, a couple of years ago.
We fixed it.
Yeah. But anyway, it wasn't carrying a number up in there. So that's been fixed. That's all part of the numbers that we presented tonight, basically. So that didn't, yeah, those numbers didn't change. We caught that one. So that's been fixed.
You don't?
I have been told there's some concerns with our proposed expenditure for economic development to DC two, which is what we did last year because of the new SECDP, where we merged all of the economic development entities. Jonathan Jank is here tonight, and he has put together some information. You may not have it in front of you, but it's in your, it's in your email or will be in your email. But he is here to sort of give you an overview of where Seward stands as far as the SECDP goes and economic development. And answer any questions.
Jonathan, you just want to say a few things?
Sure.
James?
Yeah, thanks, Ellen. And yeah, please do check your email. Sid had actually, Councilman Camp Brad had asked for just some feedback about, you know, what our organization was working on. Of course, you all know, as I've said in the past, you're more than welcome to reach out to me at any time and, and would be more than welcome to talk about specific things that we're working on, but that should give a good overview for you. We appreciate Councilman Beck's presence on our Board of Directors. And obviously, we're starting a new organization, so that's, that's part of the, the process that we're working on. But my efforts for economic development have not changed. That continues to be a priority for me, even though I, I have a, a new role. And we're starting a new organization. Economic development is something that I work on on a daily basis. And really, it's kind of the same channels that I've worked on, I've worked through in the past in that communication goes directly with, with Bruce and the mayor for, for specific projects that we talk about. Many times, there's kind of confidentiality things, but that's why I'm trying to communicate with them on a regular basis to make sure that they're, they're kept up, kept up to date. And of course, Ellen's your representative on, on the Board of Directors. And so if you have any, you know, questions about structure or something like that, please, please do talk with her so we can make sure that we have those things taken care of. We appreciate the contributions that the city has given to our organization. It's a critical part of, of our public, private partnership. And so we appreciate the consideration of continued funding for this next fiscal year.
Hey, Dave Jonathan, under the old organization, you used to provide us a director's update on a monthly basis. Is that something we can do?
I, we sure can. I actually attached the last two months. I provided it to the Board of Directors. And so I attached the last two months to the email that I just sent you so you can see those activities. And if you'd like that moving forward, I'm, I'm more than willing to do that. It's, it's been with the transition process. Didn't mean to drop the ball there necessarily, but, but thanks for mentioning that.
No, usually I do dialogue with that, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, would be more than willing to do that.
From the board's perspective, the SECDP board, all moving all these funds into one entity has taken time. I mean, probably longer than anybody anticipated. Just having Jonathan in his office up and running has taken time. So it looks, you know, like, it looks like there's not a lot going on. There's actually quite a bit going on. It's just, it has the effect of having to be able to get him up and running and hire a staff and, and just get his, you know, his computers, his space, his getting a lease for a car, getting insurance, and all these funds transferred over, new checking accounts, things like that for the authority. But, you know, I think at the, at, at the end of this year and going forward into next year, then things start to get more predictable and, and even out. But, you know, I would hope that we would support this effort. We did so in in this past winter when we transferred our funds and continue to support it for one more year and let Jonathan get, get himself equated and, and get going on, on his plan. So he's, I know he's been working extremely hard. Congratulations on the birth of your son, and, and he's been working right around that. So appreciate all of your efforts.
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
We need, I know you said they have until the next meeting to, but we have a publication date in here that, for the hearing. And so I'm gonna ask Roy and Kinsey to put that together for us. What information do you have to have, or what numbers do we need to be, do I say concrete or set on for that publication?
Budget final purposes. Myam Burger, seventy one twenty Whitewater Lane, Lake in Nebraska. The, it has to be in the paper, both the cities and the airports, by that Friday. We have to submit it September second. So it's in the print on Wednesday, the seventh, so we can have the meeting on the next Tuesday, so we can file it by the next Tuesday. So really, to me, two weeks from now is August thirtieth. We need to know city and airport levies at that meeting. That, that is a must have.
Ryan, don't we have to have it in the paper the twenty sixth?
Well, if, if we're going to do, aren't we going to do, when's the Tuesday meeting?
It's the sixth, then so we have a publication the thirty first of the sixth.
So we need it like tonight? You know what you're saying?
Well, I just, I bless the council, you know, wishes to have a special meeting.
So.
The next week after the sixth.
Okay. There you go.
The airport is, I believe they have their meeting the twelfth, Eric, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So there you go.
Publish when, right?
So it's gotta be, see the paper on a Friday and publish at least five days before you hold the hearing where we approve the levy, but you can't really make changes at that meeting. So we kind of need to know before then. So if you're approving it at the sixth, is that correct? Sorry, my day's wrong. Approving it at the sixth, we kind of need to know tonight. Would that be fair? Or a special meeting between now and then?
It has to be to the paper on the twenty sixth or here. It gets published here for the meeting on Tuesday. So, you know, if that doesn't work, you would, you know, you could consider a special meeting in here. But again, if you want to talk about here, we could put it in the paper here, publish it here, but that's too late for us to do anything here. So we're really.
Yeah. You either need to know tonight or have a special meeting on September thirteenth. And then, and then in two weeks, the levy rates would have to be approved. I don't want to make everyone in this room have an extra meeting.
I don't even know if that would work if we had this.
It could, yeah. If, if you approved it on the thirtieth, we have it to the paper on the second. They print it on the seventh, the final meeting would be on the thirteenth. And get it off to the state within a week.
It has to be to the state on the twenty third.
That's right. So we're either talking about approving levy rates tonight or doing a special meeting on September thirteenth.
But there's no formal action to approve the levy tonight. It's just saying that if, if, if no action is taken tonight and the council decides in the near future, real near future, that, that you want to explore that, then we'll have to have a special meeting to address it at that time.
Yes, and that it is, that is just as important on the airport side as it is on the city side, because what we put to the paper, we have to approve.
And I don't know that it would be necessary, given the presentation we, we had earlier. The, I don't know that the reason to raise it would be because of our current budget. I think we can get, we can make it work the way it is. The question that came up at the, at the, I don't know, was Chris, who brought up earlier at the previous workshop, or a committee meeting, I should say, was whether or not moving forward, if that's something the council would want to start, rolling that ball down the hill. It was, so that's where, that's where we're at on that. Does that make sense? That, Eric? So unless, so unless I, you know, unless someone on the council really wants to push the, an increase on the levy, or a change, any change, like what's up or down, we need, we just need to have a conversation now. And if not, that's fine. But I just kind of need to, when you don't say anything, I don't have a sense of what you're thinking.
Well, I, I would not be looking to raise all over the levy. I just wanted to know where we are on the time schedule.
Okay.
So if we take no action tonight, the levy stays the same when we go forward.
Unless we want to call a special meeting to change it between now and the deadline for the publication.
But also mention, we don't get much from a levy increase.
We wouldn't. It would be more like if you're looking to raise incrementally moving forward for some reason, then you would, is that right? You, you wouldn't want to see, if that's the scenario, then you would need to rate, would want to raise it perhaps this time so that the next time you can chip away at those increases.
But I would say, as Terry pointed out, that will create restricted funds authority issue for us immediately.
Right.
So I'm not gonna, luckily, I don't make the decision. You guys do. But just be aware of that if you decide to make a move.
So you're saying even if the, if the, if there were a desire to move the levy up, that would create a restricted funds issue immediately?
It would mean that we have to create extra lit exceptions to that restricted funds authority.
So we'd have to spend more money on capital products, projects. So we'd spend more cash in order to raise more cash.
Correct.
From the general fund, don't be depressed.
Right. Yeah, it's, it's a train wreck.
I mean, like I said, we're, the general fund is the issue. We're making a huge swing.
Huge.
We just need to stay on that path. So.
It's our plan.
Come October one, we need to start next year's budget.
Yes.
On vacation.
Maybe October second. I need one day off.
I take the non-discussion as your good faith that the levy rates are to remain as printed in this budget workshop sheet.
I think so. Thank you, Ryan.
I'd like to thank Terry and Ryan for all their help. It's been a great learning experience for me. I've learned a lot and hope to continue to learn more.
Yeah, thanks, guys. Terry, especially, I know you put a lot of work in. Thanks.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else, Bruce?
Well, I guess, what do we want to do? I mean, do you guys have any questions for, I, I ask all the departments to come. They're all here. Some of the things that we've, some of the things we've done is, just in the last few years, I mean, and, you know, we picked up the senior center, which has increased our costs about fifty three thousand dollars. We picked up the golf course, which this year really isn't going to cost us anything. It doesn't look like. But next year, we're budgeting for a hundred thousand dollar loss. I don't expect that. But again, you've got a budget on the high side. We've added, last year, we added another police officer. We still haven't hired that person. So, you know, that's a cost that we're budgeting for. The ball field lights. One of the things that's been a hit that I don't know if you guys caught, but E nine one one, our contract with the county, it went up from a hundred and eighty thousand to two hundred and twenty thousand this year, our share. So it went up forty thousand dollars. Now, we did meet, Bonnie and I did meet with, with the county clerk and one of the commissioners, and we said, can you explain to us how it could change that much in one year? Because I think the, the members that were on that board, they heard like a seven percent increase or an eleven percent maybe at the tail end. It turned out to be a twenty percent increase to us. And so we didn't get much of an answer, I guess. It just kind of is what, they take their starting cash and then they take this and that, and that's how they end up with this, and that's your new cost. And they give us the budget, but they don't tell us what our share's gonna be. And they say you got thirty days to give us, you know, ask any questions. But by the time we found out what our share was, that thirty days was up and it was done. So we were really caught flat footed with that. And so that's been a big bite for us, too, that we've had to try to absorb in this. So some of these costs, you know, we just really haven't had control over.
John, what do we have coming from FirstNet? What are our costs for the new broadband network?
Still, it's still.
Has Nebraska not decided what they're gonna do?
No.
Opting out, maybe?
No, I don't, I wouldn't say that. No, no.
But that could be a potential hit coming down the road.
Yeah, if, other things that they decide to make a change, it's gonna hit PD, it's gonna hit us, it's gonna, it's gonna hit the whole county. It's, it would be.
One, one thing, I think we decided that having this older than nine one one center, we, we decided really there's no, no reason to have it.
Because you have mobile. There's, there's one, you know, like, say, we had, last year, we had the big fire over in the Garlands. They bring in a mobile service, so why have a backup when you can have a mobile service here tomorrow or within somebody hour?
Well, it'd take like, if we have a disaster here, that knock out the nine one one center. If we have, if we put an alternate out, stay out of the county shop, probably cost somewhere a neighborhood of half a million dollars possibly.
Real quick.
There's no, no reason to do that because everybody's updating their equipment all the time. It'd be easier to have somebody else take our, take over our nine one one calls until we get up and running again.
Yeah, because, well, is it, because of the four corners, I think is what it was, their same frequency, we could actually run from another town. And they can still, they were looking at the range. So if you're in David City, could they go clear to, you know, the sling, which the range is fiction. So technology has made things better.
There's many also for the rail campus for engineering to come up with a plat or plan. That's, I guess, added cost, hopefully, if we could move some property.
Well, that's the idea, is we put money in there to do a, basically plat that land that we have, that thirty acres, and hopefully get some infrastructure in. One of the things we did was we put a hundred thousand dollars into the rail campus for infrastructure. And we took a hundred thousand from LV eight forty. And the reason we did that is because there's a law that says you have to spend so much out of your LV eight forty, and if you don't get to that point, you have to go back to the prop, go back to the voters. And so, you know, we need to use that. We're not having a bunch of people come in and ask it for it. And I think this is a great place for that to go, because that would be economic development, no doubt about it. And so we can use some of that money to help spur some development out there and maybe sell some land and some lots and get some building going out there. Again, it would be commercial, industrial type stuff that we don't have downtown, that we don't want downtown. You know, we're not trying to move business from downtown out to that little tract. That's for more specialized type things.
But that would not be to do anything in terms of installing any rail yard type, it was just infrastructure for non-rail use business?
Could be to bring water, electricity in there. But mostly it'd be for like a street in there or something like that, you know, and start building a street, things like that.
The utilities are all pretty much adjacent to that property already. So, yeah, it would just be to have the ability to, you know, be as shovel ready as possible if we were able to sell, sell lots off of that. And so, yeah, so we're, we are working towards that.
I do have a question on the ballpark lights. If we don't go ahead and put those in, are we losing out on some revenue if we're having ball games at night?
I don't know. Bob, I know with past conversations with Bob as well as with, with Steve Ferguson, the real, as far as lights were concerned, it became more down to, if you had a rain delay or something that pushed the times back, then there was some concern that, you know, you may not, those last games might run into darkness. Not so much with tournaments not coming here. You really just pick up maybe one, one more game at, at night.
So it may not be a.
Well, it, it depends who you talk to. Some people are very, very passionate about having lights down there. And it would help with some evening activities, especially for, if you're looking at softball or anything. But Bob, did you want to say, add anything to that?
Um, you want me to come up?
Yeah, if you do, yeah. Yes, please.
One thing I'd like to bring before he speaks, I mean, I've been hit hard over the last few years. And one of the things is we're pushing our teenage kids not to play in Seward. We have a group that comes up to a certain age, and then what happens is we don't have enough ball field time. And from what I've been told from all of the leagues, that when you get over this age, because we don't have enough ball time, we're kicking them out of Seward to go play in other leagues, like in Lincoln and surrounding areas. So if we would open up the lights, there's gonna be more of an open opportunity. And also, I, what I would see is an opportunity for revenue for downtown. But that's.
That's my reason for my question, whether we can miss out on a lot of stuff by not hooking them.
Well, what we've done this year and even last year, we left one field, field four at the complex. We were able to shuffle our rec games to leave one field open for practices or for ball games. I know Mondays and Wednesdays, the field four was left wide open for practice times or game times for people that wanted those games. And Tuesdays and Thursdays, there was one game, so they were done by seven. So that's still left plenty of time for somebody to, to, to play a game. The east and west fields are both still lit up, so there's times to come in there and, and play there. Are we, are we losing out? It, it's mostly tournaments when there are rain delay. You're actually only gonna pick up during the weekdays, maybe one game. Somebody's gonna come in and play at eight thirty or nine o'clock and be done by ten, ten thirty. You know, I, I think a lot of people, you know, I, I have a daughter and a son to play softball and baseball for ever. Going to different places. You, you see York getting ready to open up eight fields. You know, Aurora opened up their complex five, six years ago. Did it hurt Seward? It didn't hurt us. We still, we still had a softball tournament with thirty six teams. There was a baseball tournament with thirty plus teams. I mean, we're still getting the, we're still getting to Omaha's and Lincoln's. We had teams from South Dakota to show up here. They love, they love the complex. They love coming to Seward and the community and, and doing shopping. It's close enough to Lincoln. It would, it would be nice if we could, you know, working with Bruce and working with Larry, we looked at a different company. We thought it might be cheaper than Musco Lighting. And by the time we figured it out for two fields, it was still roughly about a hundred and twenty thousand a field to do two fields. And by the time we figured it out for two fields, it was still roughly about a hundred and twenty thousand a field to do two fields. And, uh, and it, you know, it wasn't much different than what we were looking for at the six hundred and forty thousand to do all four fields with Newsco last fall. You know, it's, they're expensive.
So my question to you then is, what age level do we cut off down there?
The, where we drop our, the kids are going?
Mm-hmm.
Where, where those kids are going, it, it, they're going to select teams. Because for whatever reason, they're being told, hey, you come play with us, we're gonna get you a scholarship here and there. Where, where they don't wanna play, they don't wanna play in town no more, because.
My question though is, is what I want an answer to, is at what age level do we start pushing them out of Seward?
We, we got eighteen, eighteen hundred girls playing for Seward, Seward Jazz.
So.
So we still play high school.
Mm-hmm.
But you're still gonna have that select group of kids that they wanna go play with the Lincoln Dodgers, or they wanna go to Omaha Quakes, play softball, because they're being told, this is where you're gonna, you got the best chance to play.
So, is there much, is there enough timeline there though to have your smaller kids play, but, and then have enough time for the older kids to play? Is there enough time for?
And that's why, that's why we opened up that field, that field four. We've made two grass practice fields that have been, that get used, uh, down by the soccer fields, uh, to, to accommodate, kids to practice, whether it's T-ball up to coach pitch. Uh, it's big enough for girls softball, sixty-foot bases there. So, yeah, I mean, the junior Jays have kids from eight to fourteen and unders playing baseball. They use St. John's, they use Goner, there's teams that use Stapler's, uh, Garland. I mean, we got Seward kids playing there, but we still, we still have our coach pitch and T-ball. I mean, you're, it's, it's just not softball, baseball, it's all, you know, volleyball, basketball, kids are gonna go into Lincoln or.
So my, my, I guess, question, so if we would put lights in, will that raise more opportunity for more games? For other levels of age groups?
You might pick up, you might pick up a, an ex, one extra game, depending on if, what their schedules are. If they wanna play, say, hey, you know, they call and, and get a Lincoln team to come down and play a doubleheader. You might, you, they, you know, you might get them, you know, we got teams that come in at nine o'clock and practice. If they're older kids on the east and west, they'll turn the lights on and have.
But those would be for older kids, cause younger kids are gonna start a game at nine o'clock.
Younger kids, right. Yeah, we do our T-ball and stuff at five, five and six.
Not, not picking on you or anything, but this is what, you know, people come to us and say, well,
Right.
there's not enough, uh, game, there's not enough fields to adequately, adequately, uh, supply with our needs or their needs. And then they say that, well, we have to go to Stapler's, we have to go to Beaver Crossing, we have to go to Lincoln, because Seward doesn't have adequate timelines. And then, the next thing is, is we shut down at a certain time, and that's it. You know, I'm, I'm just, from what citizens, with kids. So this.
Right, and, and we've worked with a lot of the teams, as well as open up the cattle bank facility, if they wanted to go in there and do batting practice, cause maybe that's, maybe they're, you know, some, they called an extra practice before a tournament. We've been able, we've worked with those teams, said, yeah, go in there, if there isn't a field available in Newsco, cause they can pull all three cages and still do infield work and stuff as well, or use a soccer field for fly balls or stuff. I mean, there's, there's always a need for, for more fields. But, but, yeah, I mean, we've, we've tried to adjust the schedule to open up at least one field, where if somebody wanted to have an extra softball or baseball game, they could use field four. And the concessions are still running during T-ball and, and all that.
And sometimes it's not that there aren't fields available, it's, they're not available during the, during the most desirable time that everybody
Right.
wants to use them, I'm guessing, you know, there are times.
Six-thirty to seven is a popular, popular time.
Right, and we probably don't have enough fields for everyone to practice between six-thirty and seven.
Right.
So that's, I think, is part of the issue too. But, you know, when, when you're thinking about this, and one of the reasons why we were, you know, you know, not to pick on the lights, is obviously a, a big target sitting there on the sheet, but part of it was that we hadn't been putting money in there, um, every year. And the reason we didn't necessarily wanna touch that was just out of respect to past council decisions to put money in there. That to rate it at a certain point seemed somewhat disingenuous to past councils' preference. And so, we were looking at other possibilities, but we, we'll, obviously, it's gonna be on, you know, everything's on the table at this point, so.
And we, and we, we hear it at the rec office, just because now York's coming out with eight fields that are open up in October, and with Aurora, you know, we gotta keep up, we gotta keep up. And, you know, I think our ball fields are, are, you know, have been very well kept, besides not having the lights put in whenever first, uh, built. But we still have as many tournaments and still the number of teams showing up in the summer times. So, I, I mean, we'll see what York does here in the next three, four years.
Thanks, Bobby, you could.
Yeah, I'll do, I'll do.
Any other questions? Yes.
If I can follow up on that?
Yes.
Baseball deal. Um, I'm Ed Gonzalez, I'm with, uh, Seward Junior Jays Baseball Organization. And I do have to comment on Bob and Steve Ferguson, they've been a great help with the junior Jays and select softball for that matter. But I've always heard adding lights would, would add one game. That's one game times four fields, that's four games. So, that's really all I gotta add.
Okay, thanks, Ed. And we have looked at phasing them in or doing them on one, so we, we've been looking at this from many different angles over the past few years. But it is something that we do hear about, is wanting lights down at that complex at some point, but.
Yeah, any other questions from the council? Or are we, one of the other things that we haven't taken out of the budget yet is, for several years, we've been running like dueling G I S systems. We have one called Beehive and one called G I S Workshop. And so we got together, the department heads and, and Bonnie and I got together with them, and it's like, why are we doing that? And Beehive was a thirty-four thousand dollar product a year. G I S Workshop, it basically does the same thing, was seventy-five, seventy-five hundred. So we got G I S Workshop coming here, and we asked them, and they're the ones that do the county stuff, you know, so we said, what, tell us what the problem is or what we want you to do that you can't do. There was basically, the only thing you couldn't do was the agenda software. So, we found another company that'll do the agenda software for thirty-eight hundred dollars a year. So, we gave them notice that we're killing that contract, so that's a thirty thousand dollar savings to us. So that's gonna come out of the budget too, so. Just a couple of things that have just come up in the last few days that we weren't able to get to you, so.
So we'll get, we'll get there, so. Any other questions or comments from the council? Otherwise, we do have another meeting starting here in about twenty-one.
Is there any, any more direction you wanna give us on, you know? I guess, where do you guys want us to get to? Zero, is that what you want? And we'll do whatever we thinks best?
Yeah, give us your, your best recommendations for what you wanna do and, um, get to zero.
Okay, well, like, just a couple of things that I've thought about since we've been talking, is like, okay, that and a couple of things. I think, you know, we're not too far off right now.
I do, I do think if, if you can swing in any way, that we should really consider putting the lights in from what I hear.
Okay. Well, I look at it now, it's kinda like what Ed says, you know, it ain't one field we're looking at, and he's correct. And if you start, if you start adding more lights to four ball fields, that's revenue that the city has opportunity to make. It's the whole downtown that we gotta look at. It ain't just the ball fields, it's all the businesses, and we wanna keep our town going, we wanna keep it alive. We wanna attract the, you know, people come to our town and spend some of their money in our town. So that opportunity's there.
At what cost though? I mean, are you gonna be able to pick up six hundred and forty thousand dollars in debt just by having forty extra games this summer?
Down, it's kinda like years of, like, the pool. If we wanna go down to those avenues, I can dig out lots of skeletons.
Let's not create more.
Yeah, so I'm just saying, you, you know, we gotta do what's right for the city. We wanna, we wanna keep the town by life. Been there long time, need there longer than you.
Oh, I'm not concerned about how long it's been here, I'm concerned about creating more debt.
That's right. Where, where we're sitting in, my, my concern, I, I would love to have lights down there, and I don't even have kids who play ball. But I'm down there and I watch kids I know play ball. But it, it comes down to where we're being physically responsible and getting our house in order before we start spending dollars on wants versus needs.
And we are going to try, like you said, to find the low hanging fruit, um, through this process, and that's a software example. And hopefully we can get there with, with a minimal amount of pain, um, and, and.
Or we can raise taxes.
And, and the big thing is, well, I look at two.
If you are getting it right now.
Yeah, yeah.
Call a special meeting. We can only raise it like twenty-five thousand dollars.
But the big thing is, I look at is, you don't have to have everything in one year. You work at a set pace.
Yeah, no, and I completely agree with that.
So, if we do one, we can do another next year, and then, okay, or if we do two this year, do two the following year. Don't have to have it all in one year, but, you know, set our sights.
Sure.
In stages. And, and we are putting, I mean, the money was, was put in there, like, almost like a sinking fund. And so, it doesn't necessarily have to be spent, and we don't even have to add two, if that's a concern. But my, my initial concern was rating money that was put there by previous council. So, I did, you know, my recommendation would probably, unless we actually, again, was, we'll, we'll look into this and we'll figure it out. But that, that's not my first choice, but we may get there, depending on how the rest of these numbers shake out.
Well, bottom line, if we can't afford it, we can't afford it.
Right, right. So, that's where we're at.
I think it comes down to when, when you're already close to zero, I mean, revenues versus expenses, and you wanna do something like that, then you have to go on this line and say, okay, well, what do you wanna drop out? And so revenues, it would be difficult to come up with those kind of revenues.
And, and I also look at too, we're, we came a long ways, we had the pool, right? We had that. Now, you know, we, we did some work on the ball fields in the past, now we got the golf course, okay? We're taking care of that. So now, there's another avenue that, okay, we put a lot of money in the golf course, so now the citizens can start looking at, we're gonna start taking care of our children too.
Sure.
That are future taxpayers.
We'll mostly do a jury.
Move to a jury. Sorry. You motion a second?
No, he starts.
Can you guys hear votes? Can we just play the votes?
You see how many of the, of golf.